Good afternoon, Mrs. Elliott. Do we have you on the line?
I'm here, Tony.
Excellent. How are we doing?
Oh, pretty good. Looks like an old lady arthritis that I have.
Oh, you had me worried there for a second. I thought you were probably gonna stay there. I'm like, oh no, we can't lose her.
Oh, no.
Well, I'm glad you could make it. Thank you.
I'm glad I could make it, too.
Good afternoon, everyone. Glad you're fine.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good, good. I hear you're having arthritis?
Yes, I guess that's what it is, in my shoulder. So...
Oh, man.
Let's see what happens with it. I'm a real big baby, so maybe I'll have to get over that.
As long as you're, you know, taking care of it and going to your appointment doctor, I think you should be fine.
Well, I saw an orthopedic man today, liked him real well, and, you know, they give that shot. I can't think of the name of it now. You've heard it. But that was the very last thing he said. And he said, "Let's try these exercises," and I was all for that. So, and some topical cream that I'm gonna put on it and see how that works.
Oh, yeah, try those, and then if nothing works, well, then the shots, right?
Say again?
I said, "Try that, and then if that doesn't work, then maybe you can try the shots."
I can always go to the shot, last resort.
Yep, exactly.
Cortisone, that's what he uses.
Yeah, there you go. I was trying to say cortisone. Reggie can make it to the meeting.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is Moses Diaz. How are you?
Very good. How are you, Moses?
Doing well. Good to hear your voice.
Thank you.
Do you remember Moses, Mrs. Elliott?
I do.
Yeah, he was the deputy city attorney, and actually, the city hired him about two weeks ago. So now he's our official city, our city attorney.
That is great. I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be back.
Good.
That's awesome to have you. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
We'll just be waiting. Hopefully Commissioner Ramos, he said he would come in, so hopefully not like last time. He doesn't have any tech issues. Yeah, 'cause I know Jeannie indicated that she would not be able to make it. She had some doctor's appointments and then another prior arrangement. That's why we have Commissioner or Vice Chair Larios to help guide the way.
Woo! I'm gonna need help, but yes, I will fill in.
That's what we're here for, Limari.
You'll do great. So really, there's only four of us, huh, isn't there?
There's only four, yeah.
If Martin comes, then there's three, because Jeannie's not here, right?
Jeannie's not here, and we're have one vacancy, which I believe is gonna go to the city council to see if they'd like, what they'd like to do if they point it or advertise it and see who might be interested.
Yeah, that's good. Well, we do need Martin, don't we?
Yes, we do. Have a forum.
I want to tell you, I didn't do a lot of homework. We had to go to Huntington this weekend and get the place closed up there, and we just had me from seven to seven, so we got that done. And so I haven't been home. And then today, so I haven't got a lot of reading in. So if I sound stupid, you'll know why.
Don't worry about that.
Don't worry.
It's nothing too complicated, thankfully.
It looks good, really. Hi, I'm like you. I'm like you. I'm like you.
I'm emailing Commissioner Ramos to see if he's will be joining us, 'cause I actually don't have his phone number.
Good evening, everyone. This is Fernando.
Evening.
Hi, Fernando. Hello?
Hey, Fernando. It's Moses. How are you?
Doing well, Moses. How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Good, good.
So we're waiting on Commissioner Ramos. I just emailed him the link again, 'cause I know last time he was having issues. Hoping he can join us soon, 'cause else we do not have a forum.
Is there a deadline on this? 'Cause I think it's, I think I saw the same APN on the council agenda.
Yeah, but we can table that item if we don't, if the planning commission doesn't consider it today. Or the city council can table that item, sorry.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know if it was timed until...
We would have to renotice it, I think, unless, I think Moses, I think what we've done in the past is we've opened a public hearing and just continued it. But I don't know if that would, that would work well here as a way of not having to renotice it. Otherwise, we would have to notice it again.
Yeah, I think the council may, could do that, you know, 'cause they would likely have a quorum with regard to this meeting. I think if the commissioners on the call want to adjourn the meeting to another time, perhaps we could do that. But I guess with the council meeting being on Thursday... See, an adjournment is, I have paperwork that I can send you, but if we adjourn, then we don't have to go through the full noticing process again. But we have to give a specific time and date when we would continue. And I don't know if we could do that without having a quorum present to know when people will be available.
Is the council meeting this Thursday?
Yes.
Oh.
And for purposes of the project, it wouldn't really make a difference whether it's approved at the, at this week's council meeting or at the next council meeting, I think would be the 23rd or the 22nd. It, I don't think it would affect the project at all.
So we have time, then? We don't have to approve by this Thursday. We have two more weeks, right?
Yes, it's not a hard deadline. It's, it was more of our target for the developer who is looking on, moving on the project soon.
Okay. I'm gonna walk out of the room for just a second.
That's fine. Yeah, maybe if we wanted to just give it another five or 10 minutes. I've been trying to find a number for him, but I'm not having any luck right now.
I'm back.
That was fast.
Right. Well, I thought maybe if we were gonna look at dates, I better have my calendar. It was nice to see the hills this morning.
Yes, very nice.
Hopefully, it's just gonna get better now. It's a little bad out there now, but, but if we have it in the morning, that's good.
I'm hoping it stays clear, 'cause it's been making my allergies act up.
Oh, I bet. And, and I'm, as I said, I was in Fresno. Fresno's been horrid. I really thought Fresno was worse than Avonale.
Yeah, Cashtalary County, I've been pretty bad.
I was gonna ask, has Cashtalary County been, well, it sounds like it's been bad.
Yeah, the sun has been red. It's looked like a scene out of a sci-fi movie.
Or no sun at all. It's been a few days here when you didn't see the sun.
Yeah, that's very true.
We, this, when we went to Huntington, we saw the field. I didn't realize it was a field. You know, they had said the fire created its own tornado. We saw the field where that happened, and it wasn't just one or two trees. It was tree after tree in this area where they were, the stumps were just all uprooted.
Wow. That would've been pretty scary to watch.
It was horrid thing. I think I'll be getting the picture. I'll bring it if we ever get back to a meeting. But it was, it was shocking. It was really shocking.
Commissioner Larios, at what point do you wanna, what, how much time did you wanna give Mr. Ramos to join before we make a decision on item, on what to do?
We'll give him another minute or so. Six, 10? Would that work?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Has he emailed me back, Tony, any of them?
He hasn't emailed me. Oh, okay. Anna just got me his number. Let me see. 'Cause I usually call him at the school. Let me call him right now. I think this is his number. He answered. Excuse me. He's gonna log in right now, so...
Perfect.
Yeah. Said he was finishing something up, but he was grabbing his laptop already. Here we go. All right.
Is that more in here?
Commissioner Ramos, are you with us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm here.
Excellent. Well, Commissioner Larios, this is your meeting. Would you like to kick us off?
Welcome, everyone. Should we start off with roll call?
Sure thing. Commissioner Ramos? Commissioner Elliott?
Here.
Commissioner Larios?
Here.
And Commissioner Tilson is notably absent. All right.
Okay, so can I get anyone to, to give me a motion to approve the minutes for September 21st, 2020?
I so moved that we accept the minutes as presented September 21, 2020.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right, roll call. Commissioner Ramos? Commissioner Elliott?
Aye.
Commissioner Larios?
Aye.
3:01, absent.
All right. Public comment announcements of scheduled appearances. At this time, any person may directly address the planning commission at this time on items on the agenda or on any other items of interest to the public within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. State law prohibits any member of the commission from commenting or taking action on matter not on the agenda. Comment limited to three minutes per person.
Wait, we do not have any public here, so we can move on.
All right, so let's move on to public hearings. General Plan Amendment 2020-02 and Change of Zone 2020-02, an application to construct four multifamily fourplex units at the southeast corner of East Medellino Street and South 7th Avenue, APN 040-280-018, and adoption of initial study mitigation negative declaration with corresponding mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. Staff report.
Tony, since you did the staff report, would you like to take this item?
Sure. So before you, planning commission, we have a application from Jose Valencia to construct four multifamily fourplex units on a, what is roughly one acre parcel. To do this, will require a general plan amendment and a change of zone, as this parcel is currently zoned, single-family residential, not for multifamily. This information is in the staff report, but the construction of fourplex units will take approximately 10 months per unit. The entire project will be completed in 40 months, and of course, the project will ultimately connect to the city Avonale's water and sewer system. So, kind of in the same vein as the project we saw earlier, actually, it was last year now. Not as the same as the subdivision, but there was a need for a initial study and mitigated negative declaration, since we're having a general plan amendment rezone. As you can see, concurrent with the land use designation changes, it will be necessary to rezone the parcel to align with the land use designation. Parcel will be rezoned R2 for medium density multifamily residential. There was a, I believe everyone should have the Attachment A, which is the initial study mitigation declaration. This was conducted by QK on behalf of the owner slash Jose Valencia. Determined that there are mitigation measures that were needed, and there was a 30-day comment period. The document was reviewed by 14 state agencies, and there was one comment received by the Department of Toxic Substances Control. So that was received last month and addresses the project's intent to work in close proximity to an agriculture, former agricultural site. Speaking with the consulting agency, they didn't believe that the concerns were really germane, as the project site has not been farmed for as far back as they could find, as 2004, and any grading required on the site is minimal. And there was, of course, a geotechnical engineering study done. In accordance with CEQA, this was the notice of intent to adopt a mitigation declaration was published in the Hanford Sentinel for this public hearing and the public hearing for the Avonale City Council later this week. As such, the staff recommends adopting the attached resolution, which will recommend to the Avonale City Council adoption of the Valencia multifamily home development projects initial study slash mitigation declaration in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, attached to the accompanying resolution as Exhibit A, that big papier. Secondly, adopt the Resolution 2020-10, which makes the following findings, that the general plan is deemed to be in the public, the proposed general plan amendment is deemed to be in the public interest. Proposed amendment is consistent and compatible with the rest of the general plan and the implementation programs that may be affected. And the potential impacts of the proposed amendments have been assessed and have been determined to be, not to be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. Proposed amendment has been processed in accordance to the applicable provisions of CEQA, which will then also recommend to the city council approval of the general plan and change of zone. So amending the, changing the land use designation of said parcel for medium family residential and approval of rezoning the parcel from R1 to R2, which I know is a lot in a nutshell. Are there, are there any questions?
The property is right next to the apartments that are down there. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm, on 7th Street.
Yeah, okay.
From, it's on, it's north of the, north and east of those apartments, so it's nestled.
Okay. And these, these are the apartments that are gonna take 40 months to build?
I believe it's approximately 10 months each, and there'll be four of them, or fourplexes.
Okay.
I'm not, I haven't spoken to the applicant or what, I know that's their proposed timeline. I don't know if Fernando might have a little more information on that.
Yeah, as far as the building timeline, I think he's gonna phase it out and build maybe one or two of the fourplexes first, and then before he builds out the other two. But he is gonna build all the infrastructure to begin with, and I think he wants to start before the end of the year.
And the landscaping, will he just do the landscaping as he goes?
Yeah, he would be, he would putting, he would be putting in all the public facilities, like the, there's a playground, a proposed playground, and a couple of other items that he would do, but I think some of the landscaping towards the backside of the development, I think he would hold off until he does the rest of the building.
Okay.
Any other questions from the planning commissioners?
No questions on my end.
No questions. Oh, go ahead.
No, no questions somewhere.
Then you would then be able to move on to opening the public hearing.
Okay, public hearing. Any comments?
And as it stands, we still do not have anybody from the public here online making any comments, to my knowledge.
Okay, discussion.
Close the public comment, then.
Okay, so we're closing the public comment? Okay, closing public comment. All right, so do I have, wait, are we agreeing then, or?
We would go into discussion, so I know we can already discuss it when presenting in the staff report, but you guys can formally discuss what your feelings and propose a yea or nay vote on this.
Okay, okay, open for discussion. I think it's a great idea. I say we approve.
I do, I guess I have one question. Do we show that our town is growing in such a way that he obviously must have some kind of, something that shows him we're growing and that there would be people here to fill the apartments, or, but you did say you, that you thought he would do the first four and then see how it goes?
Yeah, but that's mostly for funding purposes. I think he wanted to be able to generate some revenue from, from the first building to be able to fund the next phase.
I see.
But I do think that there is sufficient demand, quite a bit of demand, just from what we saw with the Arroyo del Camino apartments, Phase 1 and Phase 2. That's a total of about 76 units that were fully leased before they, they finished construction, so there's, there's quite a bit of demand still out there.
Is there a specific reason why people are moving to Avonale?
Well, I think what you see with these multifamily apartments is is actually people who are living in tight quarters in Avonel already and because there's very limited space in in other complexes. Um and so it gives um families who are currently in Avonel um another option for for low cost housing.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um anyone else? Mr. Ramos?
No, I think it's a great idea. I'd rather see something built there than the the weeds and the and the.
Yes, I agree. Yes.
And it would make Seventh Street look look better as where people come in from thirty-three or going. Uh I don't know, I just, I mean, I don't see a problem of traffic. I don't see anything. I just I just see weeds and dirt and one time I saw the owner cleaning with a hoe instead of, you know, renting a machine, but it was, if this guy wants to invest, then let it be.
Perfect. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the general plan amendment twenty twenty dash zero two and change of zone twenty twenty dash zero two? Is that correct?
And they attached um.
Oh, and the attached, attached Exhibit A?
Yes.
The mitigated negative declaration.
Yeah.
Make it mitigated, attach negative declaration.
Cause I don't have it right.
Twenty twenty dash zero nine and twenty twenty dash ten?
Are you gonna do both not motions at the same time? Are you gonna do them separately?
They should be Moses.
Done together, yeah.
You can do, we can do them together?
Yes, it is um it's recommended to do them together.
Okay, I'll go ahead. I move that resolution number twenty twenty dash oh nine of the Planning Commission of the City of Avonel recommend for adoption the Valencia multifamily home development project mitigated negative declaration. And I further move that the that um the planning, uh no, we I further move Resolution number twenty twenty dash ten of the Planning Commission of the at the City of Avonel recommend to the Avonel City Council approval of the general plan amendment and rezone per proposed in the Valencia multifamily home development project on accessors parcel, accessories parcel number zero four zero two eight zero zero one eight dash one one zero.
Just to clarify on that APN number, um the last digits are zero zero zero.
Yes.
And I believe the motion is to approve uh resolutions twenty twenty nine and twenty twenty ten. Is that correct?
That's correct.
You can call for a second.
Does anyone second?
I'll second.
There we go. Roll call, um Commissioner Ramos.
Aye.
Elliot.
Aye.
Then Commissioner Larios.
Aye.
All right, three oh, one absent, both resolutions pass. Thank you.
Okay, uh moving on to new business. Land sweeping and possible improvements to parcels and easements along State Route thirty-three. Discussion, open for discussion?
So I'll take this one since um I'm sorry, I was absent at the previous meeting, but I did watch and write the minutes and saw that there were some questions about how to improve the landscaping and the possibility of a park on thirty-three. Um I spoke to you, Commissioner Larios, a little bit about that and you've covered some of the spaces you were talking about. So staff did work with code enforcement regarding kind of what the problem was and we did notice that the weeds had kind of grown a little out of control. Um and speaking with both code enforcement and Public Works, they did explain that Caltrans has they as a as an easement right away, fifty feet from the center of the state route. And I guess they had, last time they came by to clean was around June or July. And they did put in a request for them to to come back and clean it, but they weren't sure if they would be able to come this week. So they, um Public Works, Code Enforcement, were on getting the north side of of um State Route thirty-three cleaned up. So I don't know if you passed by today or over the weekend, they had cleaned up a little bit. And either this week or next week, Caltrans will come and clean the south side. Further, as you had asked if there was a possibility of a park, I I did include a map. Yeah, we can kind of see where those parcels start and that there is quite a bit that's meant for Caltrans um easement and then there is a city um utility easement. And then it's the the property owners. So I don't believe there would be a possibility for a park, but we are going to make an effort to keep that space clean. And we're gonna work with the property owners regarding um the weeds and weed abatement, but maybe trying to improve that landscaping.
Okay, yeah, or I mean, if if it's not a park that's fine, I mean, what if it was something more like um grass and like trees, maybe a bench? I don't know. I mean, something along the lines like how it is on Skyline?
Right.
I would like that. And I'm pretty sure other people, other residents would also enjoy that. I mean, they could go on a walk and they can just, you know, hang out if they would like to, so.
Absolutely, and I feel, I think I wrote, if you guys would like to, if the commission would like to recommend for staff to continue working on seeing what could be done and to improve the landscaping there, would speak with Caltrans and see either that they come out more regularly or if perhaps the city could lend them a hand, maybe send them a bill. And then we could also work with the property owners, cause I know um down Merced and San Isla streets are how they um, those are apartments, so they don't, they don't really have any improvements. But maybe we could also work with the property owners and see what improvements maybe we could.
Yeah, that too, they they are um, yeah, they they need some work, those apartments. I, I don't know, I'm kind of like, I don't think it's it's okay for, you know, individuals to be living in those apartments, honestly. They're really run down, so yeah. If we can please talk to the apartment owners, that'd be very great.
Absolutely. Without stepping on anybody's toes, we could definitely work on on improving that 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 scenery as people come in passing through State Route thirty-three. That way they can see that, that there's at least a little nicer ambience.
Yeah, exactly. Awesome.
I think I think it would be appropriate for the maybe the council to or maybe for the someone from the planning commission to um approach the council, maybe at a city council meeting and and bring that up uh to them. Uh because I think the planning commission um technically is limited in terms of directing staff to to take any sort of uh action that way, but I think if if you directed the comments to the city council, I think that would be uh much more effective. Moses, I don't know if that's technically, uh can you confirm that, if that would be more appropriate?
Uh yeah, I mean technically, the um the planning commission's authority is primarily over land uses. Approving them, you know, basically the nature and type of land uses. Uh but what we're talking about here seems to be more an issue of uh potentially code enforcement. Uh if these are um run down. And so, yeah, I think uh planning commissioners uh could do that, uh could could bring those comments to the council or refer staff to um to do that for them. Uh one way or another, yeah, it would probably be in uh better addressed at the council.
Fair enough.
That sounds good.
Yeah, perfect. That's all good. Thank you.
And that would at least move it along and we could see what was we're what we're up against.
Absolutely, yeah. Putting it through the formal channels, I think you can track the progress a little bit better.
Exactly. Okay, we don't need a motion on that though, do we?
Uh I I think it would be uh useful to have a motion on it since it's uh on the agenda. It would be appropriate to vote on it to direct staff to uh forward those comments to the city council.
Okay, uh do we have a motion to forward the landscaping and possible improvements to parcels and easements along State Route thirty-three?
I motion.
I'll second.
All right, roll call. Commissioner Ramos.
Aye.
Commissioner Elliott.
Aye.
Commissioner Larios.
Aye.
Thank you. We will make those comments be known.
Awesome. Okay, I'm moving on to old business and we have none. Moving on to Economic Development Oversight Committee comments. Economic Community Development Activity Update.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Larios. Um we didn't meet too long ago, so since our last meeting, you know, we uh haven't had a ton um to to report back, but we did. We are gonna be kicking off our eighteen inch transmission water line. We actually kicked it off. We don't have a formal agreement yet, but um we are gonna also be kicking off our ATP project on Skyline and some of the finishing touches on the community center um exterior are being uh done this week. Some stone work that's uh that's gonna go on the front of the building, so we're uh we're, I'm excited about that to finally have that architectural kind of element finished, but we still have a lot of work to do on the inside of the building. So, yeah, I think that's, those are my only updates uh since our last meeting.
The the, did you say, uh what was the second thing you said? Was it not Skyline, but was it?
Yes, uh, yeah, our active transportation project on Skyline, which uh basically consists of a new crosswalk um at Union and Skyline in front of Bryce's Liquor. And then some in-ground lights um at our at that crosswalk and um the one uh near Circle K and an improvement there at Circle K's crosswalk um to make it easier for folks who are getting off the bus to cross Skyline, among other things.
Very good. I must have missed that maybe.
No problem.
It's been in the works for a little bit. When it's dealing with Caltrans, it takes a while.
Okay, um any, we're gonna move on to comments, planning commissioners, any comments?
Very nice meeting, Commissioner Larios.
Thank you. I tried.
Did a good job.
You did great. Thank you, Commissioner Larios.
Thank you.
Excellent.
All right, um so then meeting is adjourned?
Is there no other comments? Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Bye.
Good night.
Bye-bye, Moses. Glad to have you back.
Thank you. It's good to hear you and glad to be back. I would look forward to working with you again.
Good, very good. Hopefully we'll be seeing each other rather than doing phone pretty soon, but I don't know. But this is not bad, really. Not bad at all. Are you, are you home, Moses? You're not here in Avonel?
Um no, I'm at my office uh down down by cellular at the moment, yeah.
Very ni- that's kind of nice for you. How about you, Fernando? Are you in Avonel or are you in Fresno?
No, he.
Not that it's my business.
He took the meeting here at the office. Um I'm sure he's gonna probably be heading home in a little bit.
Very good, then I'll stop talking. Have a good night.
Bye. Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.